Good afternoon, everyone. First business today is to appoint a Lord Mayor for the municipal year 2014/2015. I can confirm that only one nomination has been received for the office of Lord Mayor for 2014-15. I'd like to call on councillor Nick Forbes to move that councillor George Patterson be elected Lord Mayor of this city for the ensuing municipal year.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and it is a huge pleasure and a privilege to nominate my good friend George Patterson to be the Lord Mayor for the forthcoming municipal year. George was born in Benham in 1949, but we are a welcoming city and we welcome anybody to the position of Lord Mayor, even if they're born in Gateshead. That's the way we celebrate diversity here. And he attended Sunderland Road Inflints and Hughthor secondary modern schools. And George went on to become, in 1966, a relief chef for the Scottish Newcastle breweries. I would imagine working for Scottish Newcastle in 1966 was probably quite a prosperous time, given the other things that were going on in the world that required consumption of beer. No reference to the forthcoming World Cup there, of course. And in 1968, George joined British Rail as a chef. He tells me that the carrot for joining British Rail as a chef was that it allowed him Christmas Day off, which was unheard of in the catering industry at the time. I'm not sure whether that's a luxury still enjoyed by the Lord Mayor this year, but nevertheless, it got George working for British Rail. And one of his claims to fame was that he cooked the meal for the Get Carter film. And there's an iconic part of that film which is shot on the train. And George says, "I remember going to see the film because I wanted to catch sight of my tomato soup." He says he wasn't terribly impressed by the rest of the film. I won't use the exact words that he said about the rest of the film, but he didn't think it was particularly good. But he did get to see his tomato soup on the big screen. And also during his time with British Rail as it was then, he also cooked for King Olaf, who of course opened the Civic Centre. And he tells me that King Olaf offered the wide choice of cuisine from around the world. For a fully skilled chef, chose steak and kidney pudding. And on another occasion, George happened to be on the train with Dennis Waterman and Rula Lenska and got into conversation with them. And Dennis Waterman offered him a part in a film called Captain's Tale, which they were short-shooting at East Auckland at the time. History might well have been very different had George chosen a career in the film industry rather than staying in the North East, who knows? But the widescreen loss is our gain in Newcastle today. So George has in total worked for 47 years in the railway industry, not just as a chef, but rising to be customer service manager. And in that time, he's also played a very active role in his trade union, the National Union of Railwaymen. And he has a reputation for being an extremely tough negotiator and advocate. And in fact, after one particularly bruising bout with senior management within the company at the time, one of the bosses, quite a high-up boss, came and had a word with George afterwards, said that he wouldn't mind him representing him if he ever got into trouble. Such was George's reputation as an advocate. And George took that quite rightly as quite a compliment. He said, "Normally, management just smiles at me through gritted teeth." George also has a very strong sense of justice. He studied law at Kensington College and in 2002 became a magistrate on the Castle magistrates bench. And I know that he's devoted a significant amount of his time over the last decade or so to pursuing justice within the city. But he's also been involved in various community organisations for a number of years. He spent 10 years as a citizen advocate for NCVS, representing people with learning disabilities and mental health problems. He served on the board of Tyneside Cyrenians and the D2 Youth Zone, as well as Learning First. And I think this is an example of his modesty. I didn't know that he still volunteers on a Friday evening at the People's Kitchen to ensure that no one in our city goes hungry. So it was clearly this interest and love of communities that brought George to local politics and persuaded him to stand for election in Walsington Ward, where he was first elected to the City Council in 2006. And since then, he's undertaken a wide range of roles within the City Council. He was Chief Whip for us when we were in opposition. He has served on the Children and Young People's Scrutiny Committee. He's served on the Policy Scrutiny Panel. He's served as a Member of Standards Committee. He's served on the YHN Board and currently serves as Chair of the Council's Licensing Committee, which, given his background as a magistrate, he says, is like, he's taken to it like a duck to water. And I know that George's busy life is corralled and organised by Sharon, who is the formidable force that works alongside George in all sorts of ways. I also remember, George and Sharon are extremely close and they don't, they clearly don't have any secrets from each other. And George found it excruciatingly difficult organising Sharon's birthday party earlier in the year because Sharon wanted to know what he was up to or why he was having so many furtive phone calls at the bottom of the garden to various people organising it. But he managed to arrange a complete surprise party for Sharon for her birthday, which we celebrated up in the Lord Mayor's Gallery. And I know that Sharon will be alongside during his forthcoming year, making sure that he keeps time, making sure that he gets to events and making sure that he is properly turned out. So, Lord Mayor, it is a huge pleasure and a privilege to capture in a short speech the many qualities that George has, which I think eminently, more than eminently, qualify him to take on the role of Lord Mayor of Newcastle. And I therefore propose him to be our Lord Mayor for the forthcoming municipal year.
I'd now like to call on councillor Sharon Patterson to second this. Keep it clean.
I've made a promise, honestly. Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can I take the opportunity of thanking you, your Lady Mayress and your consort for working so hard this year and for all the support that you give to your charities of your choice? I'd also like some family and friends who've arrived today to share in the celebrations. I first met George in 1982 through mutual friends. We're going on a blind date and I have to admit, I only went long for the free food and the wine. But I was pleasantly surprised. George was polite, good mannered, he knew his wine and he liked good food. And he also had me as well, of course. He could hold a good conversation. But we did strike an accord on social priorities which came across, and what came across was his loyalty and love for his family. And the fact that he was totally grounded, what more could a lady ask for? But it set me thinking, is this guy too good to be true? So after having a little chat with family and friends, I made the decision that it would be time for George to meet Sarah. Now Sarah's my daughter, who was eight at the time, and on meeting George interviewed him as a potential stepdad. On the agenda was, did he have any children? Did he have a well-paid job? And how much pocket money did he pay them? Then immediately negotiated a rise with a review every year. Result, all the kids got extra pocket money, George got me, and I got a free rail pass. George and I have our differences. He likes football, I hate it. He loves Tommy Cooper, a constant them. He loves Dad's Army, I don't. And endless Carry On films. Give me a break, George. We both support the same party and we've been known to have some very heated debates. However, it is our mutual respect for people and people who have difficulty speaking out for themselves that we are one. There's still more. I've always been impressed with George's passion for the people he represented as a union advocate. No matter what raised creed or colour, everyone received the same individual attention. George was exceptional at what he did and he was fearless and was unresponsible, unresponsive to the threats from above. During the miners' strike, George was branch secretary of the NUR, an organisation who was subject to close scrutiny, but that did not stop George from supporting the miners and their families. George's principles of hard work, education shamed through all of the five children and nine grandchildren that were half. Children Craig, Scott, Dean, Carmen and Sarah, all responsible, hard-working members of society, and share his unique, if not somewhat strange, sense of humour and love of sport. As a councillor, George is very versatile. He's a natural leader, but he's also a team player who works well as a team and we hold an open door. George follows things through to the end and will try every avenue to ensure the best possible outcome. George has not and never would use his position for self-gain or self-gratification, and I'm sure many of us who know him well would agree. I'm looking forward to becoming Lady Mayress, and although my health, my breathing may not allow me to fully make all of these commitments, Sarah and Carmen will be excellent Lady Mayresses in their own right and will be more than happy to take on the role when required. George is a hard-working, caring, reliable and trustworthy man who is a reflection of his mum and dad, Marion George. George is proud to live and represent Newcastle. He's loyal to the Queen and Great Britain, and I believe these are the good reasons for him to be Lord Mayor and first citizen of Newcastle. Thank you.
I declare councillor George Patterson to be duly elected Lord Mayor of this city for the ensuing municipal year. The new Lord Mayor, George Pattinson, will now make the declaration of acceptance of office and the oath.
I, George Patterson, have been elected Lord Mayor for the city of Newcastle upon time. Hereby declare that I take this said office upon myself and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties thereof. According to the best of my judgement and ability, I undertake to be guided by the Newcastle City Council Code of Conduct in the performance of my functions in that office. I, George Patterson, do swear by Almighty God that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth II, her heirs and successors, according to law. So help me God. Quite nice of you. First of all, I would like to thank Nick for his usual eloquent speech. We're quite used to that in these chambers. And to my wife councillor Sharon Patterson for her speech, which I thought was very good in the circumstances. As far as Tommy Cooper goes, I've got to say, Sharon, how you couldn't like Tommy Cooper is beyond me. He's a man, even in his deathbed, he had people laughing. He died on stage, didn't he? And who could fault Sid James in his portrayal of Sir Sidney Ruff Diamond? I mean, if anyone deserved an Oscar, if anyone deserved an Oscar, it was Sid James for that. But I'd like to thank you for your very kind words. I would also place on record sincere thanks to the people of Woodston for re-electing me as their City Council. Otherwise, I would not be sitting here today. Thanks also extended to my fellow members for supporting me and giving me the opportunity of taking up the distinguished position of Lord Mayor of Newcastle upon time. To be elected as Lord Mayor of our great city is an honour and privilege which I could never have imagined when I was first elected to the City Council in 2006. I am proud and delighted to be sharing this special occasion with you all. I would particularly wish to pay tribute to the outgoing Lord Mayor, councillor Margaret Wood. I will miss Margaret's razor-sharp wit and genuine warmth, which was shared within the confines of the Lord Mayor's chambers during my year as Sheriff. Margaret's year was not altogether an easy year. There was a period when Margaret almost lost her voice completely. And I remember one night in particular, during a meeting of full council, despite this affliction, Margaret refused to hand the reins over to me as her deputy and soldiered on in obvious extreme discomfort. That example sums up Margaret's determination and fortitude, and I know how hard an act Margaret will be to follow. Colleagues, please join me and show your appreciation to Margaret, an outstanding Lord Mayor. I am proud and delighted that so many of my family, friends and work colleagues are here today to share this unique occasion with me. I have quite a large family, three sons and two daughters, all with very diverse mix of employment demands. Both self-employed, professional and in the public sector, so getting together is near impossibility. But you're all here today and that is all that matters. I have great pleasure in appointing as my Lady Mayresses my wife councillor Sharon Patterson and my daughters Carmen and Sarah. Oh, and I'm sorry to inform Sarah and Carmen, no, you do not get an even dress allowance and you cannot use the official car to go shopping. So that one's put to bed. Jokes aside, I can't promise you will meet some distinguished and very interesting and quirky people. I am also pleased to announce my chaplain will be the Reverend Sarah Miller from St Wilfrid's Church, New Begin Hall, which is situated in my ward. Sarah has not been in Newcastle long, but has made a huge impact on our local community. And St Wilfrid's Choir will be singing their version of the Keel Row in St Thomas's later in the day. As Lord Mayor, my theme for the soon year is families. Families are the backbone of society. They provide support in good times and in bad, emphasising the true British Bulldog spirit. As Lord Mayor also, I am privileged to support charities of my choice. I have chosen three: the Royal British Legion, the Newcastle United Foundation and the People's Kitchen, which has just been awarded the Queen's Award for voluntary service. That is the equivalent of an MBE. Of course, as councillor Forbes has maintained, I have to declare an interest as I work there on a Friday night if I'm free of civic duties. In my time as Sheriff, I have currently realised the importance to the city the Lord Mayor's office brings as an ambassador for to links with business leaders, enforcers, freemen, religious groups, schools, foundations, to name but a few. I have to pay tribute to the small, very small, very, very small, ultra-professional management team whose advice, experience and organisation is crucial to the smooth running of the Lord Mayor's office. So Patrick, Linda and Brenda, many thanks for guiding us through the protocol of today's proceedings and please convey our regards to the Lord Mayor's professional assistant, assistant Ian Humphries, ensuring he will recover soon from a nasty bout of illness, which has prevented Ian from being with us today. Finally, the Lord Mayor's office is an office of historical magnitude and should never be allowed to be downgraded or die. And we all, as members of Newcastle City Council, have a duty to ensure it never does. Through my year of office, vice war government cups are forced upon us, I will be actually seeking sponsorship from the captains of industry in our city. Thank you. I am turning the agenda to appoint a Sheriff and Deputy Lord Mayor for the municipal year 2014-15. I can confirm that only one nomination has been received for the office of Sheriff and Deputy Lord Mayor for 2014-15. I call on councillor Nick Alora to move councillor Ian Graham to be elected Sheriff and Deputy Lord Mayor for the ensuing municipal year. And I call on councillor Philip Low to second. Councillor Low?
Lord Mayor, thank you. Lord Mayor, can I offer you my congratulations to you and your Lady Mayress and wish you well for the forthcoming year? Lord Mayor, it's a great pleasure to nominate councillor Ian Graham as Deputy Lord Mayor and Sheriff for the coming year. It's a double pleasure because 10 years ago today, the Liberal Democrats took control of the city and changed the mayoral succession from one-party state selection to allow opposition members to be Lord Mayor. I'm sure you will all recall, our first Lord Mayor was councillor George Douglas. And we gave scrutiny for the opposition chairs to chair and to practice, which you have continued, and I think this is a great step forward. So to come to Ian. Ian's Geordie born and bred in the West End of Newcastle. He's one of four children. He has a sister Jean and a brother Neil who still live in Newcastle, and a second brother Malcolm who lives in Nottingham. Ian and Margaret have been married for 47 years and have three daughters, Lisa, Lindsay and Nicola, which is quite useful because he's used to being told what to do by females, which in our case is quite important. He and Margaret have five grandchildren and they are a great part of their lives. When Ian left school, he joined the Royal Navy at their electrical college, HMS Vincent, and he wanted to specialise in air electronics. However, his career was cut short by a medical condition. And just to put it into perspective, this was around the time of the Q's missile crisis taking place. Ian and Margaret started their married life in Gosforth, and that was where he became involved in politics, having been doorstep by a local councillor that started many a political career, John Shipley. Ian and Margaret moved to Kingston Park in 1977 and he was elected to stand in 1994 to replace councillor David Brook. It's interesting that Ian was elected on the same day as both councillor Renton and myself. Ian has represented Castlewell for over 20 years, serving alongside several other Lib Dem councillors, including Carol DeRoz, Mayor Devere, David Down, Sid Ramsay, Ian Laverick and Philip and myself. Over the past year, while I've been there, Ian's been a great support and he covered many meetings and community groups along with Philip, who also learnt how to use a vacuum cleaner and put the washing away, but I don't think that qualifies anything as a councillor. Lord Mayor, I have to say that councillor Ian Graham is a good friend and a great colleague. He cares greatly about the ward he represents and the people in it, and he loves this city and I think he will serve the city well as both Deputy Lord Mayor and Sheriff. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Ian Low. Councillor Philip Low to second.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Congratulations to you and the Lady Mayress. I hope you have a superb year ahead. Thanks also to the outgoing Lord Mayor, councillor Margaret Wood, for all the hard work she's put in in this council, certainly. Excellent referee, I'm sure you'd all agree. I'm absolutely delighted to second councillor Ian Graham as Sheriff and Deputy Lord Mayor for the coming year ahead. I have worked closely with Ian on and off for the last 20 years since he was elected, serving on panels together. And Ian was always very even-handed, very thoughtful, but always strove to get the right outcome. More recently, we've been ward colleagues together for the last 15 months and I'm very grateful for that. I don't think we've ever had a cross word, however, I cannot say the same about the other ward colleagues. Ian's got a great number of qualities. I won't go into it at the moment, but certainly one, I certainly wouldn't say he has is playing cricket. One's turned out for our team, but I certainly wouldn't think any England players would be threatened, feel threatened for their players. Ian is a superb ward councillor. He really cares about the community. I've seen him in action. He's a strong family man, he's a good referee between us two, I'm sure. And he will be a tremendous ambassador for this city. It's a well-deserved reward for hard 20 years' hard work. Thank you very much, Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Low. I declare councillor Ian Graham to be elected Sheriff and Deputy Lord Mayor of this city for the ensuing municipal year.
The new Sheriff and Deputy Lord Mayor, Ian Graham, will make the declaration of acceptance of office.
I, Ian Graham, having been elected Sheriff and Deputy Lord Mayor for the city of Newcastle upon time, hereby...
of Newcastle upon Tyne, hereby I declare that I have taken the said office upon myself and will duly and faithfully fill the duties thereof according to the best of my judgement and ability. I undertake to be guided by the Newcastle City Council Code of Conduct in the performance of my functions in that office.
Philip Lower said, I'm sure Ian will make a marvelous ambassador for this city, and I look forward to working with him for the next year.
Can I declare that I appoint my wife Margaret as my deputy lady Sheriff? Thank you.
I now call for a vote of thanks to the retired Lord Mayor. I call on councillor Nick Forbes to propose a vote of thanks to Margaret Wood.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can I congratulate you on your election to office, I know you'll have a wonderful year. Can I also congratulate councillor Graham as election as Deputy Lord Mayor. As councillor Lower has said, it's important that the Lord Mayorality is not seen as a party political post, and therefore I am absolutely determined that we'll continue to share it between the different parties on the council, to make sure that the Lord Mayorality is seen to be somehow beyond the usual fray of day-to-day politics. Can I therefore start off by thanking the outgoing Lord Mayor, councillor Margaret Wood, for what I know has been a very eventful year in office? Not just thank you to Margaret, but also huge thanks to her lady mayors, who I know has been a constant support throughout the year, and also to councillor David Wood, who's been extremely supportive behind the scenes too. I know, Margaret, you've had a very eventful year, and some of the, some of the highlights, I think, have been the 100th birthday of Mr Joe Dixon, who was the first retired firefighter to reach 100, a really special occasion, and you absolutely made his day by helping celebrate his birthday with him. There was the occasion when our twin city Bergen, the mayor from Bergen came across, not only to light up the Christmas tree, but also, I know you arranged for it to go on a tour of the Alan Shearer Centre, and she sent me a note afterwards saying how absolutely delighted she'd been with the hospitality that you'd afforded to her, and how much she'd learnt on that. You led the city in the very somber and reflective commemorations of the death of Nelson Mandela. And one of the roles of the Lord Mayor is to bring the city together in times of difficulty or crisis, and Margaret, you were absolutely magnificent in that. And the role that you played in helping us to mourn a great leader in Nelson Mandela, I know will be remembered for many years to come in Newcastle. But there have also been some joyous occasions too, there have been the Local Heroes launch this March, where we celebrate the work of local heroes across our city, and particularly memorable, I know for me and many other members of council too, was the freedom of the city that we awarded to Professor Peter Higgs just a few months ago, back in April. And I, I know, Margaret, that the events that you've done with the Armed Forces are particularly poignant for you, given your connections with the forces and being born into an RAF family. So in addition to Trafalgar Day, I know you were delighted to welcome HMS Sportless to the city and to, to join the officers and the crew on that special occasion, and also the, to officiate at the Welcome Home Parade for the Royal Regiment of Fusiliers. And I know that it wasn't just the joy of seeing the fusiliers marching through the city, but you also shared with their families and friends the relief of seeing people return safely from overseas armed combat. And of course, you've played such an important role in representing the city to our international visitors, and I know you have a particularly strong connection with Little Rock, and I know we were delighted by the visit from a delegation from Little Rock earlier in the year, where we agreed to strengthen our relationship, and that is absolutely testament to the work that you've put in, not only this year, but also the many years in which you've built up to that particular occasion. And of course, I couldn't let the occasion pass without also paying tribute to the way that you've chaired city council meetings. I know George mentioned the occasion when you lost your voice, but you still kept us in control. And I have to say, my particular favourite time of the year was the, well, it wasn't my favourite time of the year because it was the budget debate, but I particularly enjoyed the way that you chaired the budget debate, which is usually the most contentious and difficult moment of the year. It's certainly the one that I know we were almost anxious about in terms of the public gallery being full and the, the number of people that came to make their views legitimately heard within the council chamber. And the way in which you pinned those protesters with your BDI and told them to behave, I think will go down in history as one of the presentations. I particularly liked, by the way, when they, when they all filed out after the, after the vote, and they were all shouting all sorts of things, and there were kind of, you know, whistles and things fading off into distance, you just gave them a quiet wave and carried on with the rest of the business. I thought that was absolutely wonderful. So Margaret, you, I know you've had a wonderful year as Lord Mayor, and I know you've not only been a fantastic Chair of Council, but you've been a wonderful ambassador for the city in everything that you've done, and I know that the communities of the city have appreciated that enormously, and this is an opportunity for us as a city council to also pay tribute for what I know has been a magnificent year. So thank you very much.
I now call on councillor Anita Lower, to second.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I've just had my congratulations to Ian and Margaret for the coming year. And I have to say that it is a real great pleasure to second the vote of thanks to the retiring Lord Mayor councillor Margaret Wood. Margaret's been a fitting representative of this city, and she's been ably assisted by her lady mayors Jackie. Margaret's got many qualities, including being a good listener, she's interested in people and has a sense of humour, and I think we've seen that demonstrated a lot in this chamber over the last 12 months. Margaret's travelled far since being born in Hong Kong, but has made her home in Walker with David and a family close to her. She's got Darren, Melanie, Sarah and of course granddaughter Erin, who really is the mayor, but nobody ever bothered to tell Margaret that. I think during the past year, we all know the Lord Mayor carries out numerous duties, and we've heard something about them that Nick has mentioned, but I think the one that, I think, shows just how much Margaret can be held in high esteem is when the American ambassador visited us. He was so impressed that he decided he would invite Margaret back to visit the American Embassy in Grosvenor Square in return for the hospitality he received, which is really a great honour for both us and the city, as well as the Lord Mayor. Of course, we all know that behind every Lord Mayor, there is a strong team, and the Lord Mayor's office is there, and whilst Jackie's been an exemplary lady mayors, there is still the day-to-day work of a ward councillor. And I think we must mention John and David, who have allowed Margaret to enjoy the year so thoroughly by picking up the slack when needed. I would like to share one trip, one, one memory of a trip that Margaret and I made to Romania a few years ago. We were meeting in Ceausescu's Palace in Bucharest, and we went for a meal, and as you know, Margaret doesn't drink, so Margaret ordered a soft drink and a beetroot salad. She was presented with a glow-in-the-dark blue pop and a bowl of choppy, that would have probably fed 20 people. Without comment, she ploughed through about a fifth of all before admitting defeat and collapsing into giggles, and then trying to convince all of us that we should try the beetroot salad, which was delicious. I also have to say that Margaret is my husband's idea of an ideal woman, she doesn't drink and she drives. Finally, can I say personally, I would like to extend my thanks to Margaret and Jackie, and of course to our consort David, who have all been fitting ambassadors for this city and leave a great legacy behind them. Thank you.
Presentations will now be made to the retiring Lord Mayor and lady mayors. The chain of office will also be presented to my lady mayors Sharon. I now call on the retiring Lord Mayor to reply to the vote of thanks. Councillor Margaret Wood.
Well, right, the final farewell. First of all, I'd like to thank Nick for his very kind words, you jolted my memory on a few things then. I remember the 100-year-old fireman, you'd probably never forget me because he stepped back off one of the very old fire engines and I caught him before he hit the floor. And thank you to Anita for her kind words, and I remember that beetroot salad very well. I mean, you think beetroot salad, it would have something else but beetroot in it, but it didn't. First of all, I'd like to thank all the elected members for giving me the opportunity to serve as Lord Mayor of this great city. Believe me, I've had the time of my life. I've met lots of lovely people and made lots of new friends. The role of Lord Mayor is very varied, and along with my lady mayors, we have undertaken many duties, ranging from visits to elderly people who have reached 100, and I have to say, they're usually women, to visiting schools and chatting to pupils of all ages, from nursery age, which is about my mentality, to high school pupils as well. One of the very first visits undertaken was to my granddaughter Erin's school, who were outside the hall waiting to go in, and I heard the head teacher telling the children that the school was having a very special visitor today, the Lord Mayor of Newcastle. And we overheard Erin saying, that's my grandma, she didn't tell me she was coming. That was a very special memory. And I also recall being at a 100th birthday party in the north of Newcastle, and the old lady concerned received a massive Kit Kat bar, and it was about that big. The reporter from The Chronicle was there, and he asked her to hold the chocolate bar up in the air, to which the old lady replied, it's bloody heavy, you know. That, that put him in his place. During the year of the Lord Mayor, the opportunity is there to raise funds for various charities, and this year I am pleased to say that the ones benefiting will be Monchester Community Centre Children's Section, they do a marvellous job, without any paid staff, they're all volunteers. Also Pathways For All, who are involved with children with disabilities and their families. And also a small donation will be going to Newcastle Speedway for the upkeep of the bouncy fence at the end, because it really works. I mean, when they crash and they bounce off it, they really go back into the course. I said personal thank yous to various people, but would like to say them publicly, publicly too. Thank you to Jackie Pitten, my lovely lady mayors, my friend for over 25 years, just remember you wake up tomorrow as a commoner. Me too. To David Myconsort, councillor John Stogel Walker, for keeping things running in the ward. And also to Alderman Margaret Carter for standing in at the citizenship ceremonies. She did tell me she enjoyed them, and it keeps her young, very young. A very special thank you to Ian Humphries and Patrick Tracy from the Lord Mayor's office. I know Ian's poorly just now, but he should be back next week with a bit of luck, if not the week after. To Ian for keeping things running in the office, and to Patrick, because without him being with me, giving advice, having a spare copy of my speeches in his pocket, and occasionally his glasses when I've forgotten mine, the Lord Mayor's office wouldn't run so smoothly if they were not there. As I've said, I've had a wonderful time and strangely enough, used to look forward to council meetings and trying to keep some semblance of order despite various demonstrations from members of the public. I will not comment on the behaviour of some elected members, because in the main, you've been very supportive. The office of the Lord Mayor of Newcastle is a unique one, and many people in the city hold it in the highest regard, and is the envy of many neighbouring authorities. I believe that it is something to be cherished, and would say to fellow members, it's been there for a long time, and long may it continue. Thank you very much, and I'm now off for a well-earned rest and a holiday. Thank you.
We will now proceed with the rest of the council agenda as set out. Those guests who wish to attend the church service would be welcome to leave for St Thomas's Church, although you can stay for the rest of the council meeting if you wish. Yes, nothing about that. Tea will be available afterwards in the panding room. Thank you. Yes, nothing about that. Tea will be available afterwards in the panding room. Thank you. Okay, I've just been advised we need to be at the church for three thirty, so with the introductions for new members, would you please try to keep them to a minimum? This is just, it's a timescale thing. Item four, apologies for absence.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. We've had apologies from councillors Ashby, Beecham, Bell, Burke, Fairley, Hindmarsh, Huddart, Johnson, Kingsland, Sledus, Karen Robinson, Schofield, Sudcliffe, Tinian and Stevie Wood.
Thank you. Item five, official announcement. There are no official announcements. Oh. Councillor Fairley? Oh, right, okay. Oh, sorry, you're here, yes, yes. He's here. Right. Thank you very much, councillor Shepherd. Appointment of leader of the opposition. I'd call on councillor Shepherd to move the following appointments: councillor Lower as leader of the opposition, and councillor Taylor as deputy.
So moved, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. And call on councillor Redmond to second. Okay, thank you. Introduction of new councillors. I will now proceed to the introduction of new councillors, elected at local election last month. Unfortunately councillor Robin Ashby of Parklands Ward cannot be here today and will be introduced at the July meeting of council. I will invite the following to speak: Blakelaw Ward councillor Pearson to introduce councillor Ben Riley; Denton Ward councillor Bird to introduce councillor Anna Round; Fenham Ward councillor Myers to introduce councillor Karen Kilgawa; South Jesmond Ward councillor Hardman to introduce councillor Arlene Ainslie; Westerhope Ward councillor Donnelly to introduce councillor Bill Corbett, and myself to introduce councillor Jackie Robinson. Right, councillor Pearson?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and may I add my congratulations to you and to councillor Graham on your election to such high office.
Thank you very much.
It's my great pleasure to introduce councillor Ben Riley to you and to council. Ben is joining our team in Blakelaw, and both councillors Stockdale and I are delighted that he's going to do so. Ben's local, grew up in the area, went to school and university here, and having had a somewhat varied career, has now settled into being a teacher. He teaches in County Durham and teaches children with special needs, some of whom have challenging behaviour. So, as you might say, the very difficult end of the education spectrum. And he hopes he's going to be able to bring that expertise and experience into the council's work with disadvantaged children. Councillor Stockdale and I are delighted to introduce him to you, and thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Ben Riley, did you wish to address?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can I just first of all say congratulations to yourself and the deputy Lord Mayor for your new appointments. I'd just like to say that I am thrilled to be here, representing the good people of Blakelaw and Newcastle. I'd just like to quickly pay tribute to my predecessor, Phil Risc. Let us not forget that it was he who initiated the revolution in Blakelaw, when in 2010, he won a Labour seat in what was a Lib Dem stronghold. It was Phil Risc who laid the foundations for what I believe is now the best ward in the city. It was...
No controversy there.
And although Phil Risc will not be here anymore, I know that he will continue to serve his local community in other ways. And I'd finally just finish by saying that I am really pleased to be able to help the people of Newcastle during these very difficult times. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Riley. I call on councillor Bird to introduce councillor Anna Round.
Thank you. Congratulations, Lord Mayor. A pleasure to welcome Anna Round to council. She's going to be diligent, committed member for our ward. The last few months, I found Anna to be a very engaging person to work with. Very well informed and comfortable debating the ins and outs of the Labour Party and the government policy, as well as chatting to people on the doorstep about local issues. And it's clear she's got a strong sense of social justice, fairness and equality, and she's simply a very caring person as well. Couple of decades ago, Anna began her studies at Oxford University, she tells me, and proved formative in her politics. She was a contemporary of David Cameron, George Osborne, Jeremy Hunt, saw the youthful beginnings of Boris Johnson, becoming everyone's favourite upper-class twit, and recalls meeting Michael Gove. Anna couldn't possibly comment or go on the record, but I think the words unspectacular, dull, misguided men were mentioned somewhere along the line. Naturally, Anna sought out the Oxford University Labour Party group as her natural home. She went to the first meeting and found it so posh that she thought it was a Tory party gathering, actually, and walked out and joined the City Labour Party instead. Perhaps that was her biggest political mistake so far, there's no more to come, because both Milliband brothers were involved at the time, and she'd probably be Home Secretary by now if she'd stayed at that meeting. Anyway, councillor for Denton it is, bolstered by ten years lecturing in theoretical linguistics, so I'll be watching my step in my job, in my work. And she's researched sociology of higher education and student finance. She's currently a research fellow at Newcastle Uni and a freelance social researcher, keen snowboarder and saxophonist. All qualities that will make her an excellent councillor for Denton. Welcome, Anna.
Thank you, councillor Bird. Councillor Anna Round, would you like to address us?
Thank you. Thanks very much, Simon. And thanks more seriously for the support with the campaign in Denton, which I perceive from yourself and also from councillor Michael Burke, and also for the insight that you've both given me into the work of a councillor, and into how in what must be one of the hardest times to be a councillor, particularly in the north east, particularly in Newcastle, you can make a difference in the community through listening, through good, consistent, well-formed policies, through fairness and through making hard decisions, and through sheer downright hard graft, of which I know you and colleagues in this chamber do a great deal. I hope that I'll live up to this example and that of other councillors. I've been lucky enough to get to know and observe at work. I've thanked two male colleagues who've supported me in campaigning and learning about becoming councillor. I do also want to thank very much the many inspirational women who've encouraged me to stand and supported me, and without her I wouldn't be here today. Some of them are here in this room, and others are in the wider community. As Simon said, my career has been concerned with research evidence and policy in education, fairness, access and equality, and I hope to be able to bring this learning to being councillor. As researchers, we're always anxious about confirmation bias and about finding out things that we already believe, but some things that I believe in strongly and for which I've found excellent evidence during my career is that good policy changes lives for the better, well and intelligently and fairly applied, that most people are smarter than they think, and that we're better together than apart. And I will be able to bring this to supporting the work of the council for Denton and for the city. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Myers to introduce councillor Karen Kilgawa.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and congratulations to you and councillor Graham on your appointments. I'm delighted to introduce Karen Kilgawa to councillors, the new member for Fenham. Karen is married to Gary and has two children, William and Jake. She's worked as a housing officer in New Bingen Hall, Craddis Park and Benwell, and has also worked in various roles in regeneration across the city, on community safety for the single regeneration budget, for New Deal communities, for communities in the west end of the city, and also for area based regeneration across a number of areas of the city. She's also been a ward coordinator in West City and Fenham Ward. She's in her spare time a season ticket holder for Newcastle United. She's already been involved in a lot of campaigning work with us in Fenham, with local people and community groups, and Marion and I are greatly looking forward to working in Fenham.
Thank you, councillor Myers. Councillor Karen Kilgawa, did you wish to address the chamber?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you, Matt, for those kind words. And I'd also like to thank both Matt and councillor Marion Talbot for their help and support, and also my Labour colleagues in the wider area who were absolutely invaluable during my campaign. Thank you. I'd like to thank my predecessor Helen Maxtravick, who held the seat before me, and whose decision to stand down allowed me to stand for Fenham Ward. And I've got big shoes to fill, not least those of my dad, who's Alderman Peter Lane, so I know a little bit about council work. I'd like to thank the residents of Fenham most of all, who've placed their trust in me and assured them that I'll do my utmost to represent them to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Hardman to introduce councillor Arlene Ainslie.
Before I introduce Arlene, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank Tom Woodock for the work he has done for Newcastle. I know he will miss my new, some people. I'm delighted to introduce Arlene Ainslie as the new councillor for South Jesmond today. First, I should like to tell you a little bit about her. She's a grandmother. I know, hard to believe, isn't it? She has two children, she has run her own business, and now she works for a Newcastle-based sports charity. And she has already proved her commitment to public service, both as a school governor for many years, and as this is her second time as being a councillor, having served as a councillor for North Tyneside. She is also keen on keeping fit, which will be very useful, knowing the amount of work South Jesmond councillors do. Arlene is going to be a great addition to the South Jesmond team and to Newcastle. With her experience, she will be able to hit the ground running, and she will start to make a real difference for the residents straight away.
Thank you. Councillor Arlene Ainslie?
Thank you, and can I first of all add my congratulations, Lord Mayor. And thank you, David, for all the kind words. I'm not so sure about being that fit, but never mind. Can I just say, first of all, it's an absolute privilege and an honour to have been voted as a councillor for Newcastle City Council. And I've got so many people to thank you, so, to thank, so I'll just sort of whizz through them. I'm really looking forward to working with both David Hardman and Felicity Menderson in South Jesmond. They've already been a great support to me, and I'm really looking forward to, you know, working as a team with them. During my campaign, there were so many people who came to help. Some, as has already been said in this room, who campaigned right across the city. And without their help and support, you know, we might have had a very different result in South Jesmond. I'd also like to thank the officers for not only the smooth running of the election and the count in general, but also for the induction process that new councillors are going through, I believe for the first time this year. Because I, even though I've been a councillor for ten years in a neighbouring borough, I'm finding that induction invaluable, so thank you to those people. But I think the biggest thanks has to go to the residents of South Jesmond, because they have put their faith and their trust in me to make a difference to their lives. And I'm really looking forward to working with David and Felicity, not only on behalf of South Jesmond, but for every resident in Newcastle. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Arlene Ainslie. I call on councillor Donnelly to introduce councillor Bill Corbett.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Firstly, may I congratulate you and the sheriff on your new position. On that matter, I'd like to bring Bill Corbett, who was born in Edinburgh in nineteen fifty-four and lived in Hoik in the Scottish Borders. This is a rugby country, and he's been involved with the committee of senior junior club for some time. After leaving school at fifteen years of age as an apprentice at a large knitwear company, he then, after a long weekend, he came to the north east. Since that time, he has lived, worked and brought up his children in Newcastle. He is married to Kerry in nineteen eighty-two and has three children, James, Jack and Alice, who was here today. Bill was a senior manager responsible for grounds maintenance, working for the Newcastle City Council Parks and Grounds Maintenance Service for over thirty years. During this time, he worked to bring about the excellent summer and winter beautification, alongside ensuring that the environmental standards across the city were to an extremely high standard. Bill was also a green flag judge. Bill was an adviser for the Royal Parks in London. He was a lead officer for the Newcastle Northumbria and Bloom Programme, and was instrumental in introducing flora and vegetable decoration throughout the city, which was part of the Eat Festival. He worked with the National Artists AJ in Stanhope Street, which was the Living Street Project, which was part of the West End regeneration initiative. I've worked closely with Bill during his time as a council officer, where he helped us deliver what I would like to say was the best roundabout in the city, the Westerhope Wheel. He also worked with Westover Village Residents' Association, bringing about many improvements. Since retiring, he has been involved with the community in recycling initiatives. Within the school ground, within many schools, introducing community allotments. This has been very successful. I am sure that knowing Bill, his vast knowledge and experience, we have a lot to gain in Westerhope, and I look forward to the benefits that he will bring to the city and the ward. Being Scottish, he supports the Better Together campaign to keep the United Kingdom as one. Although, as an independent and not a Scottish independent, thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Donnelly. Councillor Bill Corbett?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thanks, Mark, for such a generous introduction. I owe an awful lot, a real great deal to Mark, for his support and guidance over the past few months during the very hard and strenuous campaign. The importance of having such a strong advice, being an independent and without the experience and the backing of a political party, really cannot be underestimated. As Mark said, we've worked together quite closely over the years, and I would like to think that that relationship will go from strength to strength. My second thanks must go to the people of Westerhope. I feel very honoured that I've been given such a vote of confidence by them. My role now has to ensure that I return that vote of confidence and to demonstrate to the residents, whether they voted for us or not, that I'll work very, very hard for them. I've enjoyed some great years working for the city council as an officer, alongside some very, very talented, skilled and committed colleagues. I now look forward to the new role, although I admit, the chance of being here for thirty years as a councillor are fairly slim. I want to work alongside other members to ensure that the ward residents get the best deal for them. I'm absolutely sincere in this, and I'm completely committed to it. I'm excited by the challenge, and I'm aware that it's a new experience, but one which I really relish. So once again, I'd like to thank you for your time and looking forward to working with you all. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Corbett. It is indeed a pleasure to introduce councillor Jackie Robinson to the very diverse Ward of Woolington. Jackie has the perfect background to become a first-rate councillor. Jackie has lived in Newcastle for thirty-eight years. Jackie is a mother of three children, a stepmother to four, and has eleven grandchildren. Jackie has been a trade unice for the majority of her life. A G M B activist, has a rep for eight years, and previously started as a shop steward for twelve years. Jackie has served her local branch as an equalities officer and education officer. Jackie has achieved diplomas in employment law and acuity law. Jackie is a parish councillor of Woolington Ward, and becoming a city councillor is in itself a natural progression. Jackie has just been re-elected to the North East Regional Board as chair for the next two years, after serving as chair for the previous four years. And I'm very delighted to introduce Jackie to our ward.
Thanks, Chair. Congratulations to both you and councillor Graham for the coming year. I would like to say it's a privilege to have been voted by the Woolington Ward of the residents, and I'm looking forward to working with them in the future and yourselves. I will work hard for the Woolington Ward, and it is going to be hard this next year, coming up with a council, tough and economically. So I'm looking forward to the challenges, and thank you very much.
Okay, item eight in the agenda, appointment of committees, subcommittees, working groups, delegated subcommittees, boards and panels for twenty fourteen fifteen. I'd like to call on councillor Cook to move that the committees, subcommittees, working groups, delegated subcommittees, boards and panels, including chairs and vice-chairs, set out in appendix A circulated as amended, be appointed. Councillor Cook?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. May I add my congratulations to you and to councillor Ian Graham on your appointments. I move that those committees, as appendix A circulated, as you've indicated, be appointed, subject to the addition of councillor Karen Robinson to the regulatory and appeals committee.
Thank you. I call on councillor Bill Shepherd to second, please.
Seconded, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Are the appointments agreed? Item nine, appointment of representatives on the North East Combined Authority, Joint Authorities, Joint Committees and Other Bodies for twenty fourteen fifteen. Joint Committees, and other bodies for 2014-15. I call on councillor Cook to move that the members set out in appendices B and C circulated be appointed to serve as the council's representatives on the bodies indicated. Councillor Cook.
Thank you again, Lord Mayor. I'd just move that the members set out in those appendices B and C be appointed to serve.
Thank you. Councillor Bill Shepherd to second.
Seconded, Lord Mayor. Thank you.
Are the appointments agreed? Thank you. Item ten, reappointment of independent persons. Does council agree at the appointments? Thank you. That concludes the business. Everyone is invited to join me for the service at St Thomas's Church, and then for tea in the panel room. Thank you.